Okay, good afternoon. City council meeting Wednesday, September 16th, 2015, 4:30. Rule call, please.
Ron Rensing.
Here.
Randy Funker.
Here.
Brad Kent.
Here.
Greg Gielz.
Here.
Zach Sawyer.
Here.
Any public comments at this time?
Yes.
Okay. Up to the podium.
I'm happy for each of your councilmen. It's good. Brad?
No, sir. Thank you.
Randy. Randy.
Yep, step up to the podium. State your name, address.
Okay. I'm gonna have to go through this pretty fast because they said I've only got about 10 minutes. So, in 1994, we purchased the home in Sheldon. Everything. Everything came to our place at 1400 Railroad Avenue. 2013, Rome Limited decided to build next to our home. The city told us we don't have a street or an avenue by our home. After several trips to Primgarde, we found a resolution and certified certificate recorded in Book G of page 97, which is in front of you there. In 1968, and this is what I got from Primgarde, 1968, 50-foot strip was given to the city. The city accepted and confirmed the quick claim D designated 50-foot strip to be used as public street purposes and use. It is stated five times in North Procedings and recorded in the Primgarde courthouse. Now, in Chapter 1, Court of Ordinance, Item 23, "Street for Highways Means the Entire Width Between Property Lines of Every Way and Place of Whatever Nature When Any Part Thereof Is Open for the Use of the Public as a Matter of Right for Purposes of Vehicle Traffic." So, vehicle traffic would be my mailman, the sanitation truck, deliveries, guests, and anyone coming to our home. Okay. So, I'm gonna put that aside. We don't need that no more. Now, the next thing is the picture up front that shows the snow by that lot, okay? And that is lot drainage. Page 1. Everybody ready? I don't want to be going too fast. Page 1 shows the snow melt runoff from Railroad Avenue into the natural drain area on the Rome Lot. Page 2 shows the wet area on the Rome Lot. And special note, observe the steel wall support beams for the new building that has already been delivered to the site. And that was May 27, 2013, when I took the picture. Rome Limited at that time had not even yet applied for a zoning building permit. Now, page 3 shows the surface storm water flowing off Railroad Avenue onto Rome Lot. This area is much lower than our property on the left side. Also note, the 40-foot wide area where the new building is to set. Okay? Now, we were concerned about the drainage, so let me read you Drainage Plan 3.8. Drainage plan for the removal of storm water shall require that stormwater drains cannot exceed predevelopment flow rates. Drainage shall be designed so that all surface water should be conducted to a street storm sewer or a natural water course. No water course shall be altered or asked to direct surface drainage from one watershed to another. No obstruction shall be permitted in natural water courses unless such obstruction meets with the approval of the council. So, right now, that water is diverting over to our public. Okay. Then, on Tuesday, June 4th, 2013. Oh, just missed, I got ahead of myself. Okay, June 3rd, 2013, I called the city. Todd Yule came. I expect, I expressed our concern about the 27-foot setback for the new building and the new drainage route. He then told me Rome Limited hadn't even applied for a permit. A permit, yes. Red flag. Okay. Tuesday, June 4th, the very next day, Todd returned and said that he had the permit in his pickup. Next red flag. If we go to the application for the zoning permit, right on top, the one you got, oh, I didn't print all these out because you don't have this, but it's on file here in the city deal. But right on the very first, it says City Code Chapter 166 dot 15. No permit should be issued except in conformity with the provisions of this chapter, except by written order of the Board of Injustices. Okay, on the very back page, it says absolutely no permit will be issued on the spot. A day later, when we came, and he already had the permit. So, somebody needed a permit in a hurry. Okay, reading on. Todd also stated that Railroad Avenue ended on our northeast property line, therefore the setback regulations are eliminated. I showed him the 50-foot area that goes on, that goes over to our southeast corner property line. And that's that 50-foot area that's on that first page that I give you for the flat. Todd said he would check, and perhaps the permit would have to be changed. Talked to Todd the following week, and he told me we don't have an avenue or a street, and that the avenue signs were pulled up by the city. So, the two entrances that go into our street down there, there is not a Railroad Avenue sign on either one of them. So, people trying to find us have one heck of a time. So, why is that? There's five homes on that street. Okay. Now, we're gonna go to the zoning permit. And again, the zoning permit, it's Chapter 166 dot 15, and I read that before. No permit to be issued except in conformity with the provisions of the chapter. Down below, it says falsification of information on this form can result in nonissuance, revocation, or illegal action. Okay. Then we go to the zoning regulation ordinance, and that is Article 15, Heavy Industry, and that was updated in 2010. Page 73 of 171 pages, the intent of the heavy industry zoning. Number 4, that such use shall not impair established property values in adjoining or surrounding property. That's us. Okay, now, we got that building that put up. That building powering over our property has lowered our values tremendously. That's what we feel, my wife and I. And loss of not having a street in front of our home, what are we going to be able to sell at? Are you gonna buy a home that doesn't have a street or an avenue in front of you? Now, we wouldn't. Had we known this, we wouldn't have bought that place. Okay. Then on page 75 of 171, Site Development Regulation. Now, normally, the front yard setback would be 50 feet from the street. Their setback is 27 feet. And their backyard is next to our front yard.
Don, you have one minute, Don.
Pardon me?
You have one minute left.
Oh, Jesus. Allow me. Okay, minimum lot width, 150 feet. They have 74.2, although on the permit that shows is 85. What, okay. Why didn't they apply for variance on their property? Permit applications on here, it says the height is 15 feet. That's not true. The wall itself is 15 feet. But if you go to that last page, oh my gosh, that shows the building, and on permit that says the foundation of six inches. Go to the back page on that. Does that look like six inches of foundation to you? Okay. Since the information on this permit is not accurate and not in conformity with the provisions of the chapter 166.15, the permit should be voided. I could read more on it.
Okay, thank you, Don.
It would seem the city will eliminate all the codes and ordinances necessary to accommodate industry.
Don, your time is up. You've been given 10 minutes.
Now, in Sheldon, where families come first, what is Sheldon going to do to the Shos family?
Please, your time is, please sit down. Your time is up.
Well, thank you, people.
We'll take it in consideration.
Maybe I can finish up the next time they have a meeting.
We will turn it to our city attorney. Any other public comments? If so, I entertain public comments. Close. Consent agenda, please.
I'll move.
Second.
I'll support, but I would like to move Scotty's to a separate discussion.
Oh, okay. I changed my motion now. Sorry.
Do we have a second on Greg's request?
Yeah.
Rule call, please.
Rensing.
Aye.
Funker.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Gielz.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Now, the consent agenda, less item F.
Okay.
Is that?
I made a motion.
Motion?
With the exception of F.
Okay. Support that deal.
Rule call.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Rensing. Aye. Funker.
Aye.
Gielz.
Aye.
Now, item F, the special outdoor service for Scotty's Bar and Grill on 19, 2015. Discussion.
Initially, if memory serves me correctly, when they applied for the first outdoor concert, I have in my head, and I haven't had time to research it, but that the music was gonna be done by 11 o'clock. It seems to me now there have been complaints that it's running after that, the noise is running past 11 o'clock. I think it's in their best interest to be a good neighbor and try and work with them. They've gotten, it sounds like the police department's getting complaints because of the loud music running midnight and beyond. So, I'm willing to approve this, but I would like to see the music turned down at 11 o'clock then, so the neighbors can get some sleep.
Just to clarify, it's our understanding there is not gonna be an outdoor band at this outdoor venue for this event, but we'll certainly pass that along for.
Okay.
Is that correct, Angie?
Correct.
You heard that as well, they were not gonna have an outdoor band. So, hopefully that issue is a mute issue for this one.
But again, just for them to be a good neighbor. Yep.
Have there been quite a few complaints, Lyle?
What's that?
Have there been quite a few complaints?
Not so many in writing, just because some people feel uncomfortable having their name down. It's my understanding that the officers have been talked to by several people that have complained about the noise. I believe the last noise complaint was like at 12:47 a.m. It was much later.
I've received a couple complaints from residents down there.
Does someone have a phone going off all the time? It's very annoying.
Jerry.
It's okay. Are you making a motion?
I would move to approve.
I'll support it.
Subject to them keeping the noise down after 11 o'clock PM. Preferably before that, too, but be a good neighbor.
Okay, rule call, please.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Rensing.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Gielz.
Aye.
Funker.
Aye.
Okay, item number three, discussion with the Sheldon Community Ambulance Team. Cindy, that's you.
Okay, thanks for having us here. This is Kristen. She's one of the training officers on SCAT. She's just gonna hand out some snippets that you can Google on Iowa and EMS shortages. And then the second one she's gonna hand out is just a list of some suggestions, but I'll get to that in a minute. I guess I'm here to kind of educate and inform you about the challenges that SCAT's facing in response to manning our ambulance schedule. And Sheldon's not unique in the fact that there are several rural EMS squads that are facing the same challenges. So, I'm asking the council to seriously consider or think about how we can sustain our ambulance service in the next year or in the next five years. Some of the challenges that we're facing is struggling to maintain the staff, ambulance staffing 24/7. I have concern about sustainability in the next year, some concerns about staff involvement, and concerns with recruitment. Just a little background, EMS was actually developed in the 1960s, and then in 1973, Congress passed the Emergency Medical Service System Act, and they actually helped with funding. However, in the 1980s, they just handed it over to local communities, and we were left to dealt with it, to deal with it. So, there's never been any regional planning or strategic planning on EMS. 10 to 15 years ago, we didn't have a problem maintaining members, but due to people's busier lifestyles, sometimes people hold more than one job. We can't get volunteers. EMTs now have more demands as far as public expectations, training. Our transport distances have increased. Our current volunteer force is aging, and we're not getting young members to take our place. Our state requirements and regulations have changed, and actually, they've increased. And employers don't allow employees to leave to respond to ambulance calls. So, unfortunately, this is a community issue. It's not a state or county issue. The Iowa Department of Public Health does set our rules and regulations for the agency as well as the personnel, but it's actually the local or community that is responsible for maintaining your ambulance service. It's kind of interesting because Monday I received an email from NCC stating that the class for EMTs start in September, and this is the lowest enrollment they've ever had. And in that email, they said this is a serious crisis in EMT recruiting. And Tuesday morning, I had a member from a surrounding ambulance service stop in my office to tell me that two people on their squad are moving, one's moving and one got a job out of town. They're not sure they can respond to any day calls. So, what happens then is the next ambulance team absorbs the calls they can't take. So, to date, SCAT's never had to rely on another service to respond to our 911 calls. And as the director, I want to ensure that we can continue to respond to 100% of our Ambulance services, they're required to respond to every 911 call we receive, so we can't pick and choose which ones we want to respond to. As I look toward the future, I do have a concern about responding to calls. We have an aging population, which increases our demand of calls. Specialized care is not in Sheldon, so we have an increase in transfers. And another big concern is our mental health transfers. We transfer wherever there's a bed available, so that can be clear across the state of Iowa to find a bed. And over the last three years, our call volume has increased. If we look at putting just two EMTs on our ambulance, which to me is lowering our standards, it's better to have three. And you have like 15 EMTs on your roster, that means each EMT has to take about 22 hours a week to cover our schedule, and that's really not feasible. Some people are able to take more duty than others, but if you have a full-time job and you have a family, I can't expect people to take that amount of duty. As an ambulance team, we've been diligently recruiting, doing our best, but we really haven't had a very good response. And as I said, the EMT class starts in September, and we don't have anybody scheduled to be in that class. EMS is actually quite unique because we're the only healthcare profession that uses volunteers to provide a service in small rural communities. And SCAT has challenges, but as of today, we're not critical, but all it takes is one vacancy on our schedule, and we could be in that critical situation. As the director, I don't want to lower our standards. We want to provide excellent patient care. And I guess I need a Plan B if SCAT isn't gonna be able to respond to calls. And so, what I've handed out to you on that one sheet is suggestions, options, on how we can meet that need. I feel it's our duty to ensure that Sheldon has an ambulance that can respond to anybody's 911 call, and I'm looking for some assistance in how we can meet those needs. I also think that, given the current trends we see, sustaining a volunteer ambulance team is gonna get more difficult in the future. So, questions?
Yeah, I got a lot of them.
Oh, good.
But I don't know, to ask a question and not offer any solutions isn't fair either. You know, it disturbs me greatly that you're fighting it like this. You're hiring a consultant or strategic planning suggestion. Is that something other communities have been doing, have been looking at, or Cindy, help me out?
Well, what's unfortunate is...
I mean, I wouldn't begin to be able to sit here and say, oh, I got a solution. Here's, no.
What's kind of unfortunate is we had an EMS task force for the county, and we all agreed we had the same challenges, and that was the end of the EMS task force. And you know, and as director, there's no resources out there that, you know, I know where to go to. I do have on that list a company, and I've talked to this company. It's called Safe Tech Solutions. And they can come in, and I think it should probably be a county, because every service around us is in the same situation. So, you know, I don't have the answer.
Well, you know, from a selfish perspective, you know, when we, when I hear that the Sheldon ambulance is running to Sanborn to cover, or to Archer, or, you know, wherever, I'm saying, well, now, wait a minute. You know, somehow, there has to be some financial, either financial restitution or something from those neighboring communities. And we have to beg the county to get on and exchange on the list for ambulances. And I mean, I sit back and I say, wait a minute. If we're the only ones that are really answering most of the calls, then, you know, maybe more of the money ought to be coming here, so we can afford to hire more, or a full-time, or a couple of full-time people. Although, you know, looking at your needs, I don't know how you can cover 24/7 and only have to hire two EMTs. I mean, I would think you're gonna have to hire about six or eight EMTs.
That'd be perfect.
Yeah, but I, no. But what I'm saying is, if you're gonna, if you're gonna...
Well, I'm gonna tell you two, Ron.
Yeah.
You know, Bryan County, the two ambulance services that do transfers are Sheldon and Primgarde. And the other ones say they can't, they can't do a transfer.
And transfers, you know, I've read your notes, and they take five, minimum of five hours, four to five hours, just to go to Sioux Falls or Sioux City. Well, that takes not only the ambulance out of the community, but it takes at least two people, or three, yeah.
I think of the transfers, I'm gonna chime in here. I have a concern when both ambulances are going out of town a half hour apart. We have no coverage. We're relying on some other town. I see that as a big issue also, and I would think the hospital could either fly the other one out or do something so we have one ambulance here in town.
I'm gonna tell you that when Rise Fest was here.
I heard...
Yeah, we asked the hospital to not use Sheldon for transfers. I think they paged out at least three different ambulance services for a transfer, and none of them could respond. So, you know, these people have to get to a specialized level of care.
I understand that, but we have a responsibility of one ambulance, I think, in Sheldon. Then, my other question is, would it work to have a group of people that could take just strictly the 911 calls, and another people that would be available to go on the transfers? Because I think that's your biggest problem, is the transfers, and getting people to commit to the four to five to six hours.
Right, and you know, it used to be day duty was our biggest concern. It's not just day duty anymore. You know, as the director, I feel part of it's my responsibility, so when there's open shifts, who's covering the open shifts?
Yep.
And you can only do so many of them.
So many times.
Weekends are just as tough as weekdays.
Do you have any idea what a company like this, Safe Tech, charges?
You know, my first conversation with them was several months ago, and I want to say it would be about $4,000 to get them down here.
Four?
Yeah. But I think it's a, I think if you had other ambulance services in the area, not just our county.
Maybe what we ought to do is go to the county, because I seem to be hearing that from you, that maybe the county, because this is a county-wide issue.
There could be a possibility of getting that EMS task force back together to look at that consultant, and all the ambulance services split that fee, and...
Well, I think if, you know, we tried to get them down here, I think each ambulance service would end up having to pay their part. I don't, I shouldn't say this, but I don't think the county has the money to do that. Does that make sense?
Sure they do.
I can never get any money from them, so I don't know.
I'll ask.
I know this task force went to North Dakota because North Dakota's having the same problems. And, you know, I think they did a good job. I don't know if they fixed the problem, don't know that, but, you know, if we look at our county, we have small ambulance services in, what, six different towns? The big talk was, you know, do a regional. But if you had an ambulance that was, you know, staffed in Sheldon, you wouldn't expect them to respond to a 911 in Sutherland. I mean, that's not realistic either.
Goes back to, and I agree with Ron's comments about the county participation, because, I mean, I think we're kind of getting the shaft a little bit based on the funding that we receive as well. I mean, we're only recognized as one ambulance, but we're covering, you know, three, four different communities in O'Brien County. I certainly think we have some wherewithal to go back to the county now and say, this whole funding, we get X amount of funding for an ambulance, we get X amount of funding for equipment and emergency services, but unfortunately, and to pick on a community, Archer gets the same amount as we do. That just makes absolutely no sense. When they haven't had an ambulance service for, what, a couple of years now? We've basically been covering them for how long? go to lend itself to whether from staffing, or incentives, or other means that we can help fund and take care of our ambulance.
But I also think the medical community has to stand up. And I'm not saying the doctors or the nurses, but I'm talking about the organizational, the entity itself, Sanford specifically, you know, perhaps they need to become more involved, because no offense, but we're hauling their customers. Let's be brutally honest.
And you know...
And, and, and they send Lifelight out here, and they don't bother, they don't blink an eye at sending a $27,000 bill to fly the helicopter in here. But if we would send them a bill for $1,500 to drive the ambulance to Sioux Falls, you know, they would tell us to go fly the helicopter, I guess. I don't know what they'd do, but...
You know, we're talking about a penny run, but we go this way, too.
Yeah, I understand. We go to Sioux City, too. I understand.
No, no, I mean, we cover, we cover...
Boyd.
Boyd, Matlock, Ritter.
I got, I got a question on one of your bullets, bullet points, and you can explain it to me. It says, encourage fire to allow EMTs, there are EMTs to be on the schedule? If you're on the fire department, you can't be on an EMT schedule?
That is correct.
Why is that?
Because it, I'll answer that, fire department. Years ago, when they set up our bylaws, you couldn't be on either or. You had to be on either fire, ambulance, or EMA. At that time, it was civil defense, now changed EMA. And that's the way it is still to this date. It's in our bylaws, you can't be on both.
And we've had discussions.
Can't that be changed?
If you bring it to the officers and then the department...
I'm just saying, it seems like we have more people that want to be on the fire department than we have enough staff.
But then we also run into the problem where, during the day, we're short-staffed. We may have ten people show up for a call, and if we have a, an accident, motor vehicle accident, we're taking ten people. Four, six on the rescue truck, and four on the engine. That's ten people.
And can I, can I say, we've had, I've had that discussion with fire, fire officers? And that was one of the things, Brad, they, in order to be on SCAT, you have to be on the schedule. You can't just mass respond. And so if somebody's on the schedule for SCAT, and there's a fire call, you know, they can't, they can't go to the fire call and leave SCAT hanging.
That's the answer.
Would it be beneficial, and we kind of, Cindy and I met the other day and kind of been talking about different incentives and other items, too, to maybe develop our own internal task force, and maybe it's getting the county involved. Cindy, myself, Brad, or a council member to be involved, and a few other folks to maybe sit down and, and try to come up with a game plan. Maybe we contact the Safe Tech, see once what sort of proposal they can put together, if it makes sense. We have the conversation with the county folks, see once if they're interested in participation, and at least keep running a flagpole, have the conversation with Rick and Sanford and the folks over there, which we've been talking to them a semi-regular basis already about the full-time position that we've been talking about. I don't think we're like, Cindy was aware that we're not going to come up with an answer today to solve the problem. I think it's a long-term problem that we're going to have to address. Would that make some sense, I guess, to try to get a group put together, and...
Yeah, I think we need to, to get a group together and forward, rather than...
Just leave it lying.
Yeah. I think that's a very good suggestion.
We just felt necessary, I guess, to come to the city council, and Cindy wanted to share to make you all aware of, of, you know, the concern and the criticalness of trying to get something done here to make sure we keep our service working.
Is it common for almost all the ambulance services around here to be volunteers? I mean, do we have any full-time ambulance services that we're aware of?
Spencer was probably our closest.
Spencer?
Good.
Now, Orange City and Sioux Center have some full-time personnel.
Staff, staff.
They have some, some paid, but they have a lot of volunteers here to keep it running.
I think Sioux Center and maybe Orange City both each have one full-time staff.
We don't need a motion, do we?
No, one, one thing I would like to bring up, and for Cindy's benefit, she's been putting in a pile of time. Currently, we don't have someone acting as assistant director on the ambulance team at this point in time. And with her time and stuff that she's been putting in, typically, the assistant director is typically paid $2,700 per year. I would actually like to make a recommendation to the council, if we could direct those funds to Cindy for the time being, until we fill that position for the time and hours that she's putting in to, to covering all these duties. Would you be so inclined to consider that?
I'll move that.
Support. Discussion, roll call, please.
Renzing?
Hi.
Funker?
Hi.
Sawyer?
Hi.
Gills?
Hi.
Kent?
Hi.
Thank you, ladies.
Okay, thank you, Cindy.
Thank you for everything you do, Cindy.
And from there, then, I guess we'll just put, work together to put a task force together and keep working on that, so.
Consider discussion in regards to Home Based Iowa program. Kurt?
First of all, I just want to let you guys know what Home Based Iowa is all about. It kind of gave you a background on what the program is. It's actually a state-initiated program. We're excited to announce that we are in the process of pursuing the designation of becoming a Home Based Iowa county here in O'Brien County, and to join the other twenty counties in the state of Iowa that have already garnered that, that designation. So, just a quick background of what Home Based Iowa is all about. If you guys have read anything in the paper, back on January fourteen, Governor Branstad called in the state legislature to pass the Home Based Iowa Act, which essentially was an effort to address the shortage of skilled workforce that we're, that we're seeing currently in the state of Iowa. Obviously, I feel like a broken record up here, and I'm in front of you guys telling you skilled workforce and lack of it is a huge issue. So for us to go after this designation is important to us, and our SEDC board of directors have kind of directed us in this avenue at this point. So, what we can do is, you know, it's, it's a program that's set up to help recruit veterans and their families back to the state of Iowa. When the veterans get off of base, they're looking for places to go. There's thousands of them, and we like for them to be here in, in Iowa specifically, but more importantly, O'Brien County, which is why we're going after this designation. So, so this will benefit not only us as a region, but the veterans and their families who are looking for jobs, and also our business base, our larger employers here in Sheldon who are looking to fill that, that skilled workforce gap. So, on September eighth, we hosted Tina Hoffman, Hoffman from Iowa Economic Development Authority here in Sheldon for a luncheon, essentially invited all of our businesses to come here to listen to what Home Based Iowa is all about, and more importantly, answering questions that they may have at that point. The meeting was well-attended. We had over twenty businesses represented at the meeting. And just again, it gave them an opportunity to just ask questions to Tina and Iowa Economic Development Authority, and just learn more on what Home Based Iowa is all about here for our, for our community. So, in saying that, like I said, we are in the process currently of getting this designation. We've taken multiple steps. We formed a committee, and we're very active in trying to pursue this as quickly as we possibly can. The state has given us a kind of a guideline, a checklist that we need to go along to garner this, to garner this, this designation for our town and for our county. One of them being, we form a committee, which we have, Greg as a city council representative, council representatives on that board, Scott as, as the also city representation there. We have to get ten percent of our businesses to sign on to be a support and pledge or support for the program. The state gave us essentially a goal to reach of fifty-one businesses to sign on to Home Based Iowa. We're happy to announce we have over eighty at this point. So the program's been very well received from our local business base here in Sheldon and the county. The next step that we're kind of looking for, and kind of the good timing here for us to bring up the council, to speed it where we're at, is we have two steps left in the process. One is we need to purchase signage, which designates Sheldon as a Home Based Iowa business. It's $60 per sign. We've kind of pinpointed four main entrances in the community to display that sign. We work with the Department of Transportation to hang that for us. The cost of the sign is approximately $60. We don't see that as being an issue going forward. The second process that we still have to go through, and our committee's working diligently and getting in place, is creating an incentive, a welcome package for the veterans and their families to want to relocate not only to Sheldon, but O'Brien County. And Scott, I think, has a list of incentives that we'd like for the council to consider here today, in terms of what the city can provide. SEDC is also working adamantly with our business base to see what else we can provide as incentives from the businesses here. We'll put that all together. We'll work with the state of Iowa to get that all uploaded on the state of Iowa website, and it will get on to the bases of these retiring veterans to help them get placed in communities, help them get a job, find a spot for their families, and settle down. So, we're excited about the designation. Again, there's only twenty counties in Iowa to this point that have achieved it. We're hoping to have a public release date of, we're shooting for October twenty-eighth at this point. And with that, I'll bring Governor Branstad and Lieutenant Governor Reynolds up to Sheldon, so it'll be good PR for our community. We want to be progressive and make sure we continue to, to go after this. So with that, if you guys have any questions, I certainly can answer that at this point. Otherwise, I'll let Scott go ahead and present the incentives that we're considering on the city level, and go from there. So appreciate your support.
Yeah, just to follow up to what Kurt mentioned, basically, the, the big part of the program is establishing incentives to offer to returning veterans that are looking to locate and relocate to the community once they become established. So, here's a list of items, and there's, and all the, basically, the services and incentives are listed on the Home Based Iowa website, so that's what we do as well. So we kind of went back, and we sat down with our committee and kind of went through a lot of these items. And here's some of the items, I guess, I'm proposing to the council for consideration. One of them would be, currently, we have the utility deposit fee of $125. I'd recommend if, if they move into a home, that we'd waive that $125 deposit fee. Also, to offer $125, virtually a coupon for parking recreation fees, if they come and move in with a family, as far as getting involved in our recreational service, services, to offer $125 waiver of the first $125 of fees. Water and sewer utilities, to offer three months of free water and sewer utilities to a maximum of $50 per month. So that'd be a total of $150 of value. Sometimes, they have some that come down for, for job interviews and whatnot, that we'd offer a three-day fees way for camping out at the campground. That's only a $45 value, but if someone was in the area and they wanted to utilize that, they could. Then, as Kurt mentioned, the other, only other item as far as interest would be the signage. I would also need approval, I guess, from the council, with covering the cost of up to four signs to be located possibly on the four main entrances into our community. So, thoughts, questions? You know, as we go forward, you know, we may have additional items that we may want to consider to try to be competitive, but then we'd certainly, you know, bring those back to the council if they're city initiatives. So, also, I would recommend approval of those items.
I'll make the motion to approve those items.
Support.
Discussion, roll call, please.
Gills?
Hi.
Funker?
Hi.
Renzing?
Hi.
Kent?
Hi.
Sawyer?
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, consider the request from Matt and Renee Artug on the Sunshine Edition lot.
Well, in light of the fact that we obviously made a mistake, I'll make a motion that we accept the request and pay it.
I'll support it. Discussion, roll call, please.
Gills?
Hi.
Funker?
Hi.
Kent?
Hi.
Renzing?
Hi.
Sawyer?
Hi.
Consider the resolution for support of the Vision Iowa slash CAT grant application. Scott?
Yeah, I think as everyone's aware, we're in the process right now of putting our information together for the, the CAT grant application, which stands for Community Attraction and Tourism. Doing a lot of research. Kurt's been out, kind of working with a number of businesses. A big part of the process is, is getting letters of support from our, our larger employers. We've been talking to the school, the community college, a number of businesses have, have already given us, we have twelve to fifteen letters of support. And also, there's been some letters of financial support as well towards that. As part of the application, they also request the council to approve a resolution of support of, of funding that they're willing to commit towards the project. This, of course, is, is contingent upon the funding from the Vision Iowa or the CAT program. So basically, where we're at today is our estimate on the project with the contingencies is $5.3 million. We're requesting a grant of $1,325,000, which is roughly twenty-five percent of the project. In doing our research, similar-type projects have received funding anywhere from sixteen to twenty-four percent. So we felt, starting at twenty-five percent as far as the request, certainly would make some sense. Dollar-wise, to date or whatever, we've also received an additional, approximately about $60,000 in other donations from various businesses. We haven't been out necessarily soliciting donations or doing a fundraising campaign, just in the efforts and talking to different businesses. They've more or less offered in support of the project, also a financial pledge or support towards that as well. So what I'm asking from the council today is, is the city support of $3,915,000 towards the Event Center Project, anticipating that, you know, that number could definitely go lower, but basically that it would not exceed that number based on the grant application. So, open to any questions or thoughts, comments anybody has at this point in time with that application?
This application includes the park area, too?
It does not.
It does not.
We kind of worked through that with our grant writer. Initially, we kind of talked about making kind of an all-inclusive. You know, our application is certainly going to entail all the details of the master plan. It kind of helps, helps tell that entire story. We feel it's going to be beneficial. If after this initial application for the Event Center, if we proceed into the next phase, whether it's rec trails, park development, amphitheaters, shelters, all that, we feel that's worthy of a separate application, and then we apply for that, basically make them aware, hey, we're coming back, we're coming back next year, we're going to apply for a Phase Two grant application, and submit that, at that time. So this does not include the other park elements. Keep in mind, with the $5.3 million, that does include the access road, provisions for the access road, and then also the parking lot, which is in that entire number, so. I know there's been questions about that, so it's more inclusive than just the actual Event Center.
This isn't a solid commitment. This is just our commitment, but it certainly isn't in encumbering us in any way to have to move forward, or...
Nope, it's just part of the grant application at this point. I mean, I'm, October fifteen is our deadline for the grant application to be submitted. You know, the big issue right now out there is our operational study. It's my hope we'll have that back even before the grant application is, is completed. Generally, with the, the grant application, if we submit and make our presentation in October, even before they score the application, we're probably talking November, December. Realistically, it'd probably be close for the first year before we even know where we're at on the, the grant application. And hopefully, by that point in time, we have a better understanding of where we're at as far as moving forward with the project. So at the end of the day, before we sign and accept the grant application or a contract with Vision Iowa or the CAT program, we'll, we'll know where we're at before we officially commit to the project.
Any other comments? Action?
I'd move that we show, give our letters, our, in support for this project. Support.
Discussion, roll call, please.
Kent?
Hi.
Funker?
No.
Gills?
Hi.
Sawyer?
Hi.
Renzing?
Hi.
Okay, item number seven, consider state offset program memorandum of understanding. Ange?
Our state offset program is actually a means where, after we've exhausted our efforts to collect utility bills and ambulance bills, we can submit the claim to the state, where they will do it in a social security match, and they will hold their tax refund, and then we receive those funds. They're revising the memorandum of understanding, making some changes to the appeal process, which we will have to change our letter notifying people of their appeal process. But it's a real good means of how we can actually get some money where we thought we couldn't before.
And as I recall, when I was reading through that, there's a $7 fee we pay every time we make a claim?
Which we actually add on to their, what we billed for it, yes.
I'll move. Support. Discussion, roll call, please.
Sawyer?
Hi.
Number eight, consider final pay estimate on the airport runway 1533 lighting rehabilitation project.
Motion to pay.
Discussion roll call, please.
Renzing.
Hi.
Gills.
Hi.
Sawyer.
Hi.
Kent.
Hi.
Funker.
Hi.
Consider pay estimate number one on the 2015 Runger Street Improvement Project.
Is that going slow, or is that just me?
They had some wet weather they had to probably fight with a little bit there, but, Todd, do you have an update at all?
I mean, since the last two weeks, they've finished the storm sewer and got the majority of the water main in. I've been out of town this week, so I'm not, I haven't spoke in general on whether or not when Clearving is coming in to start the subgrade favor. October 1 is, is supposed to be project completion, so I can make a favor.
No, no, okay.
Yeah, to Scott's comment, the four inches of rain we received are still out.
I'll make the motion.
Support. That was in the amount of $140,000, $112.18, correct?
Correct.
Discussion roll call, please.
Renzing.
Hi.
Kent.
Hi.
Gills.
Hi.
Sawyer.
Hi.
Funker.
Hi.
Comments? Todd? While? Scott?
Nothing.
Ange?
I think the streets look pretty good.
They got them covered, yeah.
Yeah. Pretty soon, you won't have any curb left. Keep piling it on.
We dried it down a little bit first.
Randy? Anything?
This is our operational efficiency coming, study coming with King &amp; Ballard.
Yeah, my hope is possibly for the first council meeting in October that we'll have that. I talked to him, he was here the first part of September, I just talked to him here the end of last week. Best-case scenario, the end of September, that we'll have, you know, draft information to take a look at, and then we'll kind of go from there, so.
Greg, you have anything?
No.
Okay. I'll make the motion to adjourn, then.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Gills.
Hi.
Sawyer.
Hi.
Kent.
Hi.
Funker.